Okay. Okay, welcome.
Not me.
This is the Dyton Historical Commission meeting on September 13th. The time is now 6:10 PM. And I'm, huh, 6:07, 6:07, okay. Let's be accurate. And I'm calling the meeting to order. I'm Pat Gales and I'm the chairperson. This meeting is being recorded and will be available on Dyton's YouTube channel. The listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. And we'll do roll call. Yes, Pat Olson.
Representative Mr. Slick, what?
Bill?
Bill Pruitt.
And our guest is Ron Smith.
Adelton.
And Irene Alley. Okay. Let's do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Have all the members get the minutes of August 9?
Didn't because I wasn't on the board at the time.
Okay. Rafa, you just want to make sure she's included. Okay. I'd like a motion to waive the reading of the minutes of August 9. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any amendments or changes? Okay, I'll have a motion. Seeing none, I'll have a motion to accept the minutes of August 9, 2022.
You seconded it?
Oh, good, no, she did.
Irene did, yeah.
Yeah.
That was the way to read, right?
Yep, yes. Now it's to, the motion is to accept the minutes of August 9.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of August 9.
There a second?
I second.
Okay, oh, I think I forgot to vote on both of them. Let's vote on the first motion to waive the minutes. Pat?
Hi.
Irene?
Hi.
Rafa?
Hi.
Bill? And I'm also an I. Well, let's vote on to accept the minutes of August 9 now. Any further discussion, any changes? Nope, good, okay. Pat?
Hi.
Irene?
Hi.
Rafa? Bill? And I'm also an I. The minutes of September 6, 2022. I liked your first draft, Rafa. Any corrects?
A motion to waive the reading of the minutes of September 6, 2022.
I make a motion that we waive the minutes of the meeting of September 6, 2022.
There a second?
A second.
September 6 or September 9? I mean, September 6.
September 6, yep. Okay, I heard September 6. I don't know, but that's because I was reading it. Let's vote. Pat?
Hi.
Irene?
Hi.
Rafa?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
And I'm also an I. Any corrections, discussion, changes, amendments? Vote to accept the minutes of September 6, 2022. Pat?
Hi.
Irene? Rafa?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
And I am also an I. Okay. Moving on to the budget. All right, I got the budget sheet from the accountant that, for June 30. And so our balance was $469.63, but of that, the $300 was encumbered for the invoice for the CAI Technologies. So then the budget expenditures sheet for July 2022 shows that we have our $1,600 balance with no expenditures, which is correct through July 30. And it also shows our $300, our encumbered $300 that, from the previous year. So our ending total balance is, for July, is $1,900. I do have an invoice from the JC Company. I got the two names, well, two dates, a date and a name engraved on the plaque. They have to redo the whole name plate. So that cost was $14 for them to do that. They were very nice. I went by them once, but I found them.
Oh, good.
Yeah, yeah. So we had a date change. I found the date for Harry Baxter Green, which was 1977, and we added Dorothy Perry's name and 2022 to it. So I do have the plaque with me. When we're done with the meeting, we can get it back into its case. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the $14 invoice for the engraving and the name plates for JC Company. JC, yeah, JC Company.
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Irene? Any further discussion? Okay, let's vote. Pat?
Hi.
Irene? Rafa?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
And I am also an I. So Pat and Rafa, if you just want to sign. I'll get that into the accountant. The James Briggs Garden sign. I talked with Jenna about the sign, and she does have some graphic design skills. So she said she's willing to attempt at least a design for including the write-up for Captain James Briggs and the picture. So when we go and we talk to possible people to make the sign, we have an idea what we're talking about, rather than us trying to mishmash it all together. And so I'm still working on the Captain James write-up. Once I get that done, I'll share it with you and with Jenna and Tanya. We'll need the picture wrapper, of course, that you have of the Briggs house. And then we're still looking for options on who will make the sign. So we're still working on that. You? Did you sign both of them, Rafa? Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions about the sign for the garden? Our town webpage, I found two things that I think we might want to consider. You just want to take one and pass that around. Might want to consider giving, putting up on our webpage once it's up and running. One is there's a difference. It's about the difference between the local historic district and the national register district. To explain those differences. And then the second one is the National Register of Historic Places, effects and benefits of listing. I thought these might help us in our discussion with people about districts and town. Because there always seems to be confusion between what is...
Did you get one?
No, I figured you would just have this section.
Yeah, you didn't have, yes.
Thank you.
A confusion between what constitutes being in a national register of historic places and what a local historic district is. The major, big difference is the fact that the local historic districts are done by town bylaws. So that's, that's a major one. So read this, see what you think. And in October, we can make a decision whether to use these on our webpage. Okay. The Dyton Rail Trail project, and this part has to do with the Taunton River Trail at Sweet Knowles. Rafa and I continue to meet with Marna regarding the write-up for the historical sites, the sites that we've identified. And there's a design concept public meeting for the Taunton River Trail. It's Sweet Knowles on September 22 at 6:00 PM. I will send the link to everyone. This is open to the public, comments and, you know, interest and all of that. So I will forward that to you. It should be very interesting. You got that email too, Ken?
I did not.
You did not? Oh, interesting.
I know.
I'll send it to you. I'll make sure.
Is that going to be a Zoom meeting?
Yeah, yeah. It has a link right, it'll be all in the email. All right. The survey and planning grant FY21, the one that we're finishing up on. I have all of the final forms, and I brought, I just brought one tonight to show you. So we get the final form, and each form has a picture that goes with it. I have a picture that looks like this. And this is a form. I just brought this one for an example. Take that. So I was trying, I was thinking about how we want to have this information available for the public. There is a lot of information in the forms. There are all the pictures, there's pictures, there's maps. So my thought is that, at least for us at Town Hall, we should have one. Library should have one. The town historian. And then I would also like to discuss having the society, the historical society, to have copies at their, at the museum. So we'd have to work out getting copies made. Like, I guess a society would have to pay for their own copies and so. But we can figure that out. And I think those are the four places where the information would get to the people that are searching for it. Does anyone have any other ideas of places where it should be kept? Or is that?
That sounds good.
So in order to do that, we'll need some notebooks. I think each of the forms, they should be in the plastic sheets. So as you're turning it, that, you know, it's not going to get all fingerprints and all of that, so that they store better. And then the colored photos. I had one of these at home, and so I think we should purchase. We just put in like three colored photos. There is a space. I thought there was a space. But we can like put, how to identify it? Or the one I was looking ahead. I want a place that identifies where the photos are, like that's from 100 acres. So this photo would be here. You would say top picture from 100 acres. Bottom left would be, you know, Main Street. Bottom right would be, say, Brick, the Brick area. So that you know, the photos are labeled on the back. We could put six in and label them on both sides, as long as people know, you know, they're identified where they're from. So we'd have to buy some of these too.
And goes that acid grade?
Yeah, yeah, you'd have, yeah. And WB Mason does have them in their archival quality, because I checked them out. I think that's, you know, that would help to get the information out. I also talked with Jocelyn again about doing a program so we can talk about some of these forms and talk about what resources she has. Maybe early November, and do kind of a PowerPoint to show some of it, you know, some of that information, and also have them available then. But that would be another way of disseminating information. But also maybe having some of the people that have the historical markers on their homes already to come and talk about their homes and why they put the markers up and a little stories about their homes, so that, you know, people see the point of doing that too.
Do we have all the copies for the, like, the library in the Town Hall?
We have to make those. So I wanted to talk to Leanne about what would be the most cost-effective to go, like to...
The Staples?
Staples or the one in Taunton. What am I thinking?
The vault?
Yeah. Up, up there, you know, or that Town Hall. I think it's a lot to handle at Town Hall. So I think we really should, you know, go and make the copies and then pay for them that way.
When are they updated to macros?
Be a process there. They'll, they're all at, you know, MHC, and they'll start updating, uploading them. So I can't really say when they're going to start doing that process, but they will. I can ask her what their usual timeline is for that. That's a good question, because it takes a while to upload.
Well, if these copies are so expensive, I don't know how much so expensive is, but I mean, it's going to be online.
Yeah, a lot of people don't go online. I mean, we do. I just think the more you can have the information available, the better off you are. What was I thinking about the forms? I just lost my whole.
So let's see, they're all printed up in notebooks. We're going to probably have to have some kind of a workshop, maybe to get them all together or something, or a couple people, two, three people.
Two.
To make the fold.
Oh, yeah, 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 definitely. That's down the road, yeah. I'm trying to think. Once we order, I would say, three notebooks for the town, and then the cost of printing and the cost of, I don't even have a ballpark figure for these acetate sheets, but we can do that, decide that in October, what our purchases, purchases will consist of and the price for that. The other thing is, I talked to Leanne about putting these forms on our website. And once we're up and running with the new website, the problem that she saw with that, all of anything that's written, written form also has to be read into the computer, because it has to be accessible for anyone with reading disabilities so that they can hear it and not just see it. So I guess you have to describe the pictures. So there's a lot to that process. So just putting it out there that, that could be a little stumbling block to get it on our webpage. From this survey, we got a listing of historical places, National Register of Historical Places. And this was all in the documents I believe I sent to you at one point in time. If I didn't, I will resend them. So we have quite a few that are eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. So one of our next goals should be to see if we can start doing some of the work to get these on the National Register. There is a workshop on the 19th through Massachusetts Historical Commission on the National Register. It's at 6:00 PM or 7:00 PM, 7:00 PM. And I can fill, send you the link for that. Well, seeing this National Historic, this is one of Stacy's works for the final products that she sent. You've seen that.
Do you run it by those people at all the houses, I guess, to get the permission to put on a National Register?
I don't think you need to, because it's, I don't, I don't know the whole process, so that'd be one of the things that we learn. But that's also what, you know.
Benjamin, Miriam, I think he corrected it. That might be an older list.
What's that?
My house, she's still got John Wright as the original owner, and it was his father, Benjamin Wright. But I think that was corrected, I thought. So this might be, this might be an older list.
I thought she corrected that. That's one of the things that I had put in for her, but I don't.
Some way I thought it was correct. Yeah. Just wanted, maybe this is an old.
And the description of Stiles when he was there, you know, was included. She may have kept it John, because if she couldn't prove that it was Benjamin, she did the deed research.
She did the deed research 30 years ago. Probably should have made copies, but they wanted a dollar for each page.
Darn, huh?
You know.
We also have, the GSI mapping is in the final edits. And everything is, has to be finished by September 30. So we're nearing the end of that one. Does anyone have any other comments on that? Can we send that to, to make sure that everyone has it? Took me a few minutes to find it today myself. You know, I said, I know I saw it. All right, moving on. Our Phase Citywide Historic Property Survey update. We have some changes in the scope of work, and there's two reasons for that. And I did send that as a late email to you today. I don't know if any, that you saw it. One is it's a non-funded. It's, MHC is not funding it. So we don't need a lot of the steps and the hoops that they require, because it's a grant. I have a couple of extra copies I made in case wanted them. So. And also, because within our original scope of work, we also asked for sample forms and all of that, but we know Stacy's work. We've seen, you know, tonight, we've even seen the results of some of her work, that to ask for more sample forms and, you know, proof that she can do the job is like not necessary. So with Mike and Stacy, we boiled it. Stacy sent us a sample to boil it down to like three phases. The first phase would be the 24 weeks, and that's where she would be doing, conducting all of the architectural assessments. And we would verify the final target list, then start, she would do the draft inventory forms. That would all be first. And then we would do like the introduction, the outreach letter for the fieldwork survey that we did before, and to inform the Dyton Police. And that Phase 1 would end by, oh, and the other thing is, it wouldn't, the work wouldn't start until October 31st. Stacy requested if we could back it up a little bit, because she's still finishing up some of the survey work. She was, she had gotten COVID, so she got like a month behind. So the contract would be, the phase would begin on October 31st. Phase 1 in this scope of work would be completed by April 14th in 2023. Phase 2 would consist of us reviewing the forms and commenting on the forms and talking with the consultant to discuss any changes. That would end by May 12th. And then the last phase is producing the final inventory forms and all of the documents that we need to finish it, completing another National Register Criteria Statement, preparing the base map, adding them to our GSI layer, which will be not as lengthy this time, because the layer already exists. So it's a matter of just, you know, plotting in those dots. So we would get a street index, so all of the products, the large-scale map, the numbered inventory forms. And MHC would also get the same copies, the same information. And that would, Phase would be completed by June 9. So. Any comments? I mean.
Are those, we're voting on that contract tomorrow night. Are those days changed? Does Mike know?
Yeah, Mike and I sat today and worked through it, yeah. Yeah. Because I tried to put some stuff together, and then, you know, Stacy had given us some things, and then Mike and I finished it up today. So the contract's ready for tomorrow night at the selectmen's meeting. So any questions? All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the scope of work changes.
Still moved.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Pat?
Hi.
Irene?
Hi.
Rafa?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
And I'm also an I. Okay. All right, Bill, CPC report.
Well, CPC has not received, at this point, any new applications for eligibility. So what mostly we're doing is, has been, have been doing is reorganizing the entire CPC. Personnel-wise, we have, you know, quite a few new, few new members. You see, I don't know if you ever heard of this application called Dropbox. Is it here then?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have, I think Gales was quite helpful in setting that up and getting all the members into that. And then you can create folders within that. This is sort of like a, well, it's sort of like a cloud-based database. And you can create folders and so forth. So we're putting in, you know, all our paperwork for previous projects that were submitted in those programs. And then, and we're beginning to look at maybe changes in the application form. We hadn't, you know, so what we've been doing is, well, you have to take the original article that created the secret, and make sure they're not trampling on anything that there's any conflict between that and what changes we may, may or may not do. And I guess that's it. It's, we're trying to fix all the little problems that we have incurred over the past. And that's it, really.
Do they have a date when they're going to be accepting applications by? I know it's like usually.
No, that's, 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 that hasn't been determined yet, as far as changing the fact that we have two, actually, we have two. We have a, two general town meetings is the, the main one. And then the one in, was it November, I think? Yeah. So that's a special town meeting, but that's also eligible, you know, for voting on projects for the CPC. So we talked a little bit about, well, some of, some towns, we looked at some of the towns' descriptions, like, oh, I don't know. I think maybe Arlington, some of the towns north of Boston, and looked at their application procedures to see if there's anything they're doing that might be interesting for our town. And so that's ongoing. And there is, there is the idea of bond issues for the CPC, which is a legal thing. For instance, if you were, had a project that was really expensive, and it would go beyond your current balance, say, then it is possible to actually create a bond issue. It would be done through the, whoever does bonds and Dyton, the town accountant, whoever submits bonds, issues. But personally, and I brought this up at the meeting, and I'm not too keen on that, because it's obvious that if you were to say, take out a bond that required, say, a big one, 50 or 25,000 a year, you know, to pay for it for 30 years or whatever, the long. you know, to pay for it for thirty years or whatever the long. That money would would be taken directly from CPC account and transferred into the bond payment account. And so you would effectively cut down your, right now it's a hundred one percent is roughly a hundred K, a little more. Plus, we get all the money that uh the registry of deeds uses, I mean, the fees that people pay for, you know, house deeds when they buy a house or any of that. All that fees gets chopped up and divided. I think by population among all the towns in Dyton that have CPC and that adds, that's, I think it's like twenty twenty-five thousand extra we get currently, maybe not that much, maybe twenty K. So anyway, but the bond thing would basically and since say it was worst case thirty years, you would have a whittling down of your available spending to the point in theory, if it went crazy, uh you would have none, in which case you just shut the CPC down because you would have no funds to 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 award. So anyway. So those are the kinds of things of when I started with the CPC, I think it was a year and a half ago. It it seemed to be relevant. None of these questions would be an ass and 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 I thought that we weren't very well organized and so forth, but come full term on that now. So I'm pretty happy the way things are going right at the moment, so.
Okay, so you don't know when there'll be the deadline for the dates yet? And they're still drafting the application forms?
Well, we may not make any changes at all. It hasn't, we haven't, uh, we're going to be, this Thursday will be, next Thursday will be uh uh, that'll be one of the things on the agenda, I think. But so you will, some of these towns, they only have one date per year. In other words, after that date for applications.
Mm-hmm.
Just one. We have a rolling one, which means whenever we don't care about, I mean, it has to come in obviously at a at a time that's synchronized somewhat with the town meetings. Um, but I would you know, I don't know, again, I can't really make any, you know, fixed statements on it.
Do you know what the the balance like? They've divided them up those like the historic, open space, um.
Not off the top of my head. You mean for?
Yeah, for like how much is in the historic um account?
Not off the top of my head. It it um I know what like, I know what the balance is for the pool, you know, the roughly, because it was about eight hundred K prior to the North Dyton playground, which was a big expenditure. It was two hundred twenty K, so subtracted and then the twenty-five K
Yeah.
that we got on the last deal. So we still have quite a bit of money in that. You know.
Isn't there a certain percentage that is supposed to go to the floor?
And I don't know. I really don't know what that is.
Okay.
Without looking it up.
Okay, okay. Anyone else have any questions?
It used to be the cutoff day, it used to be November fifteenth.
That's, yeah.
I know, I, obviously you guys can review that and decide that.
You mean the date of the meeting?
You had, you had to have your application in, not approved.
Okay, well, you probably, that's.
I don't know, seven years, you know, five, six, seven, and you you guys are reorganized.
You need at least a couple of months before, because you gotta review the application for eligibility and then if that flies, then, you know, and then the group, the proposal.
Yeah, that would be for the June meeting, for the annual uh town meeting. So this November for our special time, there's no applications and we're not gonna, there's nothing, we're closing the warrants tomorrow night, so we're not gonna we're not gonna be.
Right, so the timing's up on that.
My guess is that uh unless there was something really high priority or something, maybe, I mean, in theory, you could be done. You'd have to you know, get the two applications in, you would have to um vote on it, the final one, and then you'd have to create the warrant article. And then it would have to go to the Board of Selectmen, right?
We approved the warrants of it.
Okay, so that would have all have.
We're doing that. We're we're closing the warrants tomorrow night, so whatever warrants are in there, so we're not.
So no more.
So we're talking June.
It's June or next November.
Next November.
Yeah, so, okay, good. Um. Before I forget, I forgot, it is the contract for Stacy's um on the agenda for the selectmen's meeting tomorrow night. It's way in the end of the agenda. But that's okay, um, because I can't be there till at least seven-thirty anyway. Um, but if anyone else would like to attend, feel free, so. Like my vice chair. So.
But you want to be there, right? You've been a, you've been a, Rafa gets there.
I told Mike, you know, if he, if I'm not there, you know, go ahead without me, but Mike said it. Yeah.
Any problem. Uh, I don't know, you are right, it's down.
Yeah, it's it's after all of the appointments, and I think the last appointment was like at seven fifteen, and then there was a whole mess of other things you had to do and then you know, so you're eight-thirty before you get to me.
Think of it, and would, I I can advance it, I think, but I see you walk in, I can.
Yeah.
Depends on what we're talking about.
Right.
So.
I don't care if, you know, wherever it is, I'm fine, just that I'm not. Yeah.
Wait.
Okay. Um. Under new business, huh, it's that time of year again to discuss about upcoming grant opportunities, so we have to think about this. Um, the CPC applications are something we want to put money in for. Um, I really want to think about that National Register. We did all the work to get these areas identified, so maybe we want to consider the next steps for that. Um, do we want to do more survey and planning to do, update more of the town? That's an option. Um, because the like the survey and planning grant eligible activities for that. So organize, I over-organized myself. Can be for the National Register, it can be the community-wide um inventories. It also can be a community-wide preservation plan that someone helps you write a plan. So there's a number of things that we can do. Um, what do we feel is the most important? So we can, you know, think about that. Um, I'll see if I can find more information about the National Register. Historic places and um we'll make it, you know, go from there. We meet October eighth. No, uh eleven. For some reason I had November eighth for us. I don't know where November came from, but anyway. Um, October eleventh, so we would have time to work on stuff for any of the November deadlines. Because a survey and planning grant has usually been November for their letter of application. So. Um. And we're on a roll. We're doing really good, I think. So if we just keep on going, it would be excellent. All right, um, we have a volunteer application from Ron Smith. Who's been sitting here very quietly.
Oh, true.
Um, and Ron, he, you know, has a, he says a lifelong in interest in history and he has some general history classes in high school and college. Um, Ron, you wanted to share a little bit about yourself?
Two coupons.
Oh, that's more, that's T and I, I don't need to know.
Strong sense of humor. Just listening, as they have been. I honestly feel it would be of uh value to this, especially you've really bitten off quite a bit for a a small committee like this and but my experience in the town is probably the the biggest hammer I have to convince you. I was on the cable committee for ten years. All the forms you're talking about, I wrote them. I create, I follow CPC forms. Everything, everything like that, every question. Uh. So uh very much involved CPC, the first three projects. Actually, this is one of them. The heating system in this building was the first, that was our trial project to see, to flex the system, to see what we came out with. Then we did the tennis courts. And then we did the building for the society.
Mm-hmm.
And then I I left and don't know what happened after that. Don't really want to know, but it's a good idea to review all those procedures, because that was probably seven or eight years ago and God knows what's changed since then, so. I I would be uh an asset as far as that goes for any projects that you have that are CPC related or because I will speak up in a second if I think
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there's something that CPC could get involved in. Oh, you've already done it, right? One of the projects you're working on is funded by.
Right, the one coming up, yep.
There's something like that or anything new.
Right.
Uh, the library, is CPC in the library project at all?
Not yet.
The new library will be.
Yeah, that's the one, yes.
So about you, so you can bring, you bring some strengths to us, yeah.
Retired, I am a have a degree in systems engineering from Georgia Tech. I, my entire experience in that field has been in field systems engineering with one timeout of about five, well, you know, five years where I uh was in computer system sales and support for a what they call the vario, now you added reseller, so I was in the loop for when computers first came out. Other than that, I'm at your service twenty-four, seven. I have no I am widowed, so I don't have any real problems. If you need somebody to go to New Jersey or something like that, I'll go, you know.
I don't plan on going to New Jersey. I know, I can send him. You're, okay.
So I have a lot of, I've been preparing, going over. I like probably ninety-nine percent of the people in the town of Dyton had no clue, myself included. And I was involved in a lot of different things. Uh, what the Star Commission did, and I've really educated myself and it's can be a very good, very good tool for Dyton if it's used correctly. And I'm very impressed with what I see.
Oh, thank you.
For this. You got quite a, quite a bit on your plate, but and it's valuable, so I would love to get into that. I guess, and like I said, I I see all these things about the house, just as an example. You know, talking about these surveys and all this stuff and the historic districts and all that stuff. What about West Dyton? I don't see anything in here, and I am a forty years in West Dyton. I know the West Dyton people.
Heck, yeah, we'll, we'll get there.
Well, that's, that's why I'll be, I'll be a bird under your saddle. I know you're doing some work with the North End, but.
Everyone has has to take their place.
Oh, they haven't voted.
Oh, well, that's why I wanted to be there. I didn't get very far with finance either.
Okay, well, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Ron? Rafa knows that he is very observant.
You are very observant. I would like to thank you for having noticed that my inspection sticker in my car had expired.
Ten months. Ten months. So that's not observing, that's just a wait.
Had to replace.
She's saying.
We did replace it, right, without.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
I was waiting for the cops to.
One of the jobs they had as a systems engineer and resume was I was a quality manager at a medium-sized corporation in Elkhorn. So I have a lot of training and looking and seeing and listening. And that's an example.
That's that'll be good.
Want to be a big asset to this.
A big one.
All right, um, nothing, no questions, we're good. All right, I'll um entertain a motion to recommend to the Board of Selectmen that Ronald Smith be appointed to the Dyton Historical Commission.
So do you know if they got their application?
Yeah.
Finally.
Yeah, yeah, that's why we're.
By hand.
That's why we're acting on it.
Yeah.
Um, tonight.
Okay, no, I just because that was this.
The computers.
I tried to get on CPC and I couldn't have to sending in.
Okay.
Application, but.
All right, so we have a, Rafa made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? See you and let's vote. Pat.
Hi.
Irene.
Hi.
Rafa.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
And I am also an I, thank you. And so Ron, so you know, um, I will write a letter to the Board of Selectmen telling them what we voted. Uh, it will be on the September twenty-eighth agenda for the board. Um, they'll do their vote.
You don't have to be there.
Are you on, I know you're the interface between, but
I'm on.
Are you one of the selectmen?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize that.
I can't tell. I can't tell you how I'm gonna vote, no.
Yeah, so, and then once they vote. Depending on their vote, then you, you know how you just have to go and get sworn in and all of that stuff, so.
Will you be able to vote at the October?
At the October eighth. Eleventh meeting, yeah. I want it to be the eighth, but that's a Saturday, so ignore that.
Well, he's available twenty-four, seven.
Yeah, I know. Sorry, he said that.
Yes.
Because he doesn't know what I do, right?
No, I I know.
I'm not.
Already, I know what you do.
I think we should test him on that twenty-four, seven.
That's a good idea. I'm up two o'clock in the morning. I got my stick up.
So you know, as long as your phone identifies you, I will answer. Today was a classic day. I had eighteen phone calls today on my landline, sixteen of which was spam calls.
Right, right.
Oh, yeah.
I will not answer unless it comes up with my idea.
Yeah. Oh, agreed. All right, moving on.
Yeah.
Discussing, reviewing and acting on honoring Mary Rebelo. Um, Mary Rebelo, I got a note from Trista Tate, who is the new primetime program manager. And she says that they have a client here at primetime turning a hundred and four years old on December fifth this year. She is a lifelong Dyton resident and we are so excited and already looking into ways to celebrate her. The director recommended I reach out to Town Hall to see what the process is, or if there is one about getting a certificate for Mary from the town of Dyton in recognition of all she has accomplished. And then I spoke with the town and they suggested reaching out to you. Any help with this is greatly appreciated from Trista. So there's a little background to Mary Rebelo's story. Um. Was it two thousand twelve was the last time the Boston Post came was given before we started. Um, I don't know. I have the, the plaque is right over there.
That Ms. Cummings?
Yeah.
That was at the society, but I remember.
Yeah.
Benji's was a selectman.
Or was it the the nun from the Novitiate after her? I thought the nun was last.
I don't know.
Only one person at a time.
Person is the oldest, oldest, is the oldest person living in town.
Living in town. The nun from the Novitiate.
Okay.
Thousand sixteen. Okay, so that was before any of us, except for Pat, on the commission. Um. And at that point in time, from two thousand sixteen till we started again in with Mrs. Barbosa in two thousand twenty during the pandemic, Mary had moved out of town. Um. She was here, I think, till she was about a hundred. Pandemic started, she had already moved, I think. We hadn't done anything, the commission hadn't done anything with the Boston Post Kane until we revived it again for Mrs. Barbosa. We did look at Mrs. Rebelo, but she was living in Tottenham with her daughter. So one of the requirements for the Boston Post Kane is that you are a resident of Dyton. And unfortunately, at that point in time, she wasn't a resident of Dyton. So that's the background to it. However, I understand that she was very involved in town. She volunteered. Um. She maybe even served on a couple of boards or something. I'm not sure. I have to, I asked Trista to find out how she was involved in Dyton and give back to me. Um. I think anyone who lived a hundred years in Dyton, she goes to the program here at primetime. She's going to be a hundred and four. That we should consider some kind of honor. Um, recognizing her wonderful age. Age longevity, yeah, yeah, um. So.
Is the post cane signed to somebody right now or?
Yes, no, it's signed to somebody, we just.
I thought the idea of the post cane was that person kept that until they die.
That, and we just gave it, yes, we just, don't give the cane out anymore. We just give the, a certificate, cause the cane is right there in that case, um, and we just gave it to Dorothy Perry in August.
Yes, it was just, yeah.
Yeah, um, but again, she's not a resident.
She's not a resident of the town, so she's not eligible to get the Boston Post cane.
If Taunton had it, she would, you know, if you go, but.
I'll be sure they do, that, that's a new thing, did you realize?
Yeah, city.
Yeah.
Didn't have it, that's right, it was just towns, um, so I think somehow we have to figure out how we're. What we're gonna call this honor, a certificate, um, I think they're planning to do some kind of program, we could be part of that.
I think Primetime is, cause Jeff mentioned that.
Okay.
I was thinking of doing a special recognition for her.
Yeah, I've, I've talked to, uh, Trista and Laura Minteris also today and, and. They sent me the, I think the email that they may have sent to you, Pat, was something about, they wanted her to get the Boston Post cane. That's not possible.
No.
And, uh, maybe she would have been eligible before we really started doing it, that's.
The timing was just.
And I, in my, going back on my texts and I, I told them I'd take the cane away from.
No.
Miss Perry.
Yeah, and, uh, but they, they're interested in knowing what we want, I said, we wanna do something, Star Commission wants to do something.
Yeah.
So they're interested to see what we wanna do and we can coordinate with them. Uh, I'm not sure if they're doing something this Thursday for her, I don't, I don't know if it's her birthday Thursday, because.
No, birthday's in December.
Okay.
I don't think, Jeff mentioned that, uh, the group wanted to do something for her. I don't think it was up and coming right away.
I, uh, I do know we did something, cause I remember going over there and I read something to her, I remember going to Primetime, I think you were there, maybe someone. Uh, Joanne, I know Chris was there, uh, there were some people that was there, I don't know, I wanna say it was a hundred, because we haven't done anything. For, because of COVID in March of twenty.
Right, right.
Uh, so we haven't done any of that stuff over there, so it had to be before that, so whether it's when she turned a hundred, or maybe a hundred and one, but at that point she wasn't living in Dayton.
Right, right.
Uh, I mean, they were a little upset when I was there last week, I don't know, I wish Jeff, uh, heard about it, that.
Yeah, he did.
Uh, but we can't change our rules.
But he had said she is living in Taunton with her daughter, so she's not really considered a Dayton resident.
Right.
Had been.
Right.
But they still wanted to honor her and give her some little recognition for the longevity.
Right, and I think that, I, I agree, you know, um, we just have to figure out what we wanna call it.
See, and they're gonna speak to her daughter too, just, and maybe we can get information from her daughter about her history in town and stuff like that, I. A lot of people know her, I don't, I only know her from her age and that's.
Right, right.
Whether she was doing something twenty years ago in town or whatever.
Yeah.
She wasn't, well, anyway, I don't know what her.
She didn't live in her old house, but one of the.
Um, I'm not sure exactly where she was, yeah, I'm sure we can, she might have been to, like farming and stuff, but if we get. I, all right, I will talk with Trista, say that, yeah, we're on board for honoring, but it cannot be the Boston Post cane.
No, and then the selectman can give her a certificate, if you wanna talk to Lee Anne, once we get the history of.
Yeah.
History, we can write something up, and if it is December, we could time, uh, to work on this.
And we could do a certificate, I don't know what we would call our certificate, um, but.
The oldest resident, oldest former resident of Dayton. Work around it.
Yeah.
Like that.
Now, is this something that the state would do to give a proclamation?
They were talking about that, maybe, uh, the governor or, you know, state representatives, senators, they've done different stuff.
If you reach out to them, they.
You know, like Pat had dead and.
Are they still there too?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, you reach out to them, their offices and, you know, they, they will do that, so. Um.
I don't think he's been there for.
No, no, them.
I don't.
Oh, no, okay, so anyway, um, we'll continue working on that, I will say.
Are you gonna be?
Maybe should.
You're gonna reach out to Trista then?
I'll reach out to Trista, should we take a vote that we're on board for honoring her or?
Yeah.
I think if, if she has lived in town a hundred years, that's a recognition in itself, that a resident has lived in town a hundred years. So I'm not sure what we would call it, but I think it's actually, because time flies.
It does. All right, I'll entertain a motion to, um. Work with Trista Tate, the primetime manager.
Trista.
Trista, T R I S T A.
Trista.
Tate, yep, she was born in.
Um.
I don't know.
They, they tell me, they told me the other day that she lived in town her in two years, which is not, I don't believe that's accurate.
Oh, okay.
No.
I mean, misinformation, I'm, I'm not laying around them, these, these things, uh, come out, but. I believe she lived probably about a hundred years in town, and it's before we were really getting active with the Boston Post cane, I'm glad we're doing it, but, uh. We can't take it away.
She probably hit you with it.
But it was one of, we just gave it to hold and she didn't wanna give it back, I mean, we just, I, I forget the woman's name. I won't mention it.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah, no, well.
She was a very nice lady.
She was.
Was that Virginia, Sylvia?
Yeah, thanks, um, all right, I'll entertain a motion to, that we work with Trista Tate. At primetime on honoring Mary Rabello.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, uh, we'll vote all in favor, Pat.
Aye.
Irene.
Aye.
Rafa.
Aye.
Bill, and I am also an aye, so that's unanimous, and I will reach out to Trista, and we'll get that going, we'll think of something. Okay, um, we didn't have any correspondence in our box, public input? No public input? Right now we have, well, when we started, I mean, we had two, but we are making a recommendation to the Selectmen on the twenty-eighth. To fill one of our positions, so we will have one position left to fill. I think we were only a full board for maybe.
Two weeks.
Meetings, maybe one meeting, um, way back when, so. Our next meeting is October eleventh, uh, six P M here at Town Hall, and is that it?
Well, I have just one little thing I left out of my resume, my verbal resume, I was the. Titan Electric Light District Chairman for six years.
Oh, so you have chairman experience.
Not only that, I have district.
Okay.
You wanna take a vote again?
About a change, you know, I think you may have trapped yourself on the foot there now.
Time you go by a street light, you realize it's an LED light.
Yeah, that's you, huh?
Okay, all right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, it is, Rafa, what time do you have?
Seven oh five.
At seven oh five. Any motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, and we'll vote, um, Pat.
Aye.
Irene.
Aye.
Rafa.
Aye.
And I'm an aye.